I'd like to call to order the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners Workshop Meeting for Wednesday, December tenth, 2025, will begin with a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. We have minutes before us for review that we will take action on next week. The November twenty-sixth, 2025 workshop meeting minutes and the December third, 2025 legislative meeting minutes. Executive sessions held between meetings. Mr. Haggerty?
On Tuesday, December ninth, an executive session was held to obtain the advice of legal counsel regarding personnel matters, transportation contracts, county finances, and RFPs.
Any questions of Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, we'll move to public participation on agenda items only. This is for the items that are on our agenda today only, and it is a three-minute cap for for public participation, and we are being livestreamed. Just a reminder to say your name before you begin speaking. Anyone for public participation on agenda items only. Seeing none, we'll move to directors and guests. I'd like to invite up Mr. Enders. Today, we have the special honor of the presentation of the Craig Webb Memorial Awards. I'll have Director Enders kind of make an introduction, and I know Commissioner Priest will start us off, giving us a little bit of the history and tradition of this award.
Yeah, thank you, Director Enders.
Yeah, gentlemen, every year we gather for this ceremony, and I'm privileged enough at least to somewhat oversee that it happens and it's maintained on Craig's behalf. And it's a wonderful service that you three gentlemen put on for them, and they're honored by their peers. The takeaway that I always take away every year, and I mention it every year, is the sacrifice, not that all the fine ladies and gentlemen that are in the emergency services force put forward every day and every year, and they're definitely different than the rest of society, but it's the spouses that end up missing out. And in some circumstances, we get up for an award ceremony today, and we put on a suit, and our wife asks us, "What's today for?" "Oh, I'm being honored." And then we get in a lot of trouble on the home front. So it's one of those things where no one here wishes to be honored. We do, I know every one of them appreciates the acknowledgement, but it's that character that keeps us going every day here in Dauphin County. And I know we're only honoring three, but we could be honoring 303. So, Commissioner?
Thank you, Director Enders, and welcome, everyone. Today is a special meeting here for the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners, a meeting that we all look forward to each year. Today, we get to honor and give special recognition to those individuals who work on our behalf 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, without alarm sounds, and they're called out, they spring to action without asking any questions. They are there helping us in our time of greatest need. And I think it's fitting that Treasurer DeFrancesco is here, as he was on the board with Commissioner Hartwick, and it was Nick's idea to start this award back in 2005. So, thank you for being here today. Mr. DeFrancesco, since 2005, the Commissioners have presented this award in memory of Craig Webb, a longtime paramedic who died suddenly around the holidays in 2004. Craig Webb carried the mantles of EMS, police, fire, and soldier with high distinction. He also was instrumental as an officer on the Dauphin County Council, deputy coroner, dispatcher, and an instructor for military personnel. The purpose of the Craig Webb Memorial Award is to recognize emergency service providers who by their actions demonstrate loyalty, professionalism, leadership, dedication, integrity, high-quality patient care, and a tireless desire to improve the emergency service system within which they work. And we have three such outstanding recipients here today. Craig Webb demonstrated all these qualities in abundance throughout his life of service. He'll be missed, but never forgotten. The Craig Webb Memorial Award is presented to one firefighter, one emergency medical person, and one law enforcement officer who embody the spirit of the late Craig Webb. The names of the Webb Award winners have been added to a memorial plaque which hangs at Dauphin County's Department of Public Safety. And each year, we do reach out to Craig's widow, Jamie, and she has come here in past years, but she has since relocated to the southern region of the country and was unable to be here in person today, but we did communicate with her over the last couple of days, and she provided this written statement, which I'm going to read into the record. Dear esteemed colleagues and honorees, I hope this message finds you well. Although I am unable to attend in person due to my relocation to the southern region over the past eight years, I wanted to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude for the invitation extended to me. It is truly an honor to be recognized amongst, among such a distinguished group of individuals. My journey in emergency services has been profoundly influenced by Craig. He taught me not only the technical skills required for our work, but also how to embrace the passion that drives us to serve our communities. I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate all of this year's award recipients. Your unwavering dedication and commitment make a tangible difference and is appreciated by the community daily. The selflessness and hard work exhibited by each of you extend far beyond a single day of recognition. They represent a lifetime of service. The spirit of giving, sharing, and providing guidance and support is what truly defines our community's strength. Craig devoted his entire heart and soul to serving others, and his legacy remains an enduring source of inspiration for all of us. I cherish my memories of him, always ready to lend a hand and show up without hesitation, exemplifying genuine care for others. In honor of the exemplary service you have all committed to the community, and in memory of Craig S. Webb, I extend my deepest appreciation, heartfelt congratulations, and sincere gratitude to each one of you. Your dedication and commitment do not go unnoticed. With warm regards and fond memories, Jamie Webb. And at this time, I would like to call up Cindy Karen of the Halifax Area Ambulance and Rescue Association. If you could please have a seat. Good morning, Cindy. All right, Cindy, congratulations.
Thank you.
This is an honor bestowed upon you by your peers, and you're here. You can look around the room right now and see the best of the best, and you are now recognized forever with a plaque in Dauphin County as one of the best of the best. And I know, as Director Enders said, you would give this award to everybody else you serve with, because that's just the kind of person that you are. I'm going to read this proclamation into the record after asking you, giving you an opportunity to make a couple of comments about what this award means to you and the individuals that you work with.
It's truly an honor to receive this award. So many, as they said, are deserving of this. I was shocked when this was presented to me. I never even thought I'd be considered. I do what I do because it's what I love and what God has put me on earth to help do. I work with the greatest bunch of individuals who sacrifice a lot of time with their families, who care for individuals that we don't even know, but they're in our hearts at all times while we're working on them and even after we're done working on them. So, I want to say thank you to everyone that put me in this position. I am so grateful for what God has provided me to be able to do. Thank you.
Okay, this time we're going to give a proclamation to the record, present you this plaque and oath of allegiance. We, the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners, are pleased to recognize Cindy Karen as a 2025 Craig Webb Memorial Award recipient for Emergency Medical Services. Whereas Cindy has been with the Halifax Area Ambulance and Rescue Association for sixteen years, consistently serving both her patients and her community with professionalism, compassion, and commitment. Whereas Cindy is recognized as one of Halifax's top responders, ensuring that the community can count on reliable and skilled emergency service and care whenever it is needed. Whereas she is a tireless contributor to her community, assisting in fundraising efforts and delivering for Meals on Wheels while also being actively involved with the Halifax Community Church. Her acts of kindness highlight her compassion and willingness to serve others in every facet of her life. Whereas Cindy's combination of dedication to patient care, organizational leadership, faith-based service, and community outreach reflects the very spirit of the Craig Webb Memorial Award. She embodies the values of selflessness, teamwork, and unwavering service that this honor represents. Therefore, we join the 293,000 residents of Dauphin County in commending Cindy on her commitment to the community and her excellence in service and care. We do hereby proudly proclaim December twelfth as Cindy Karen Day in Dauphin County.
I'd like to invite up our next award recipient, Kyle Miller. Kyle, you're receiving the Craig Webb Memorial Award for Fireman of the Year. We're honored to have you with us today. I will read a proclamation in a moment, but as Commissioner Priest said, what does this award mean to you?
Well, I'm humbled that any one person could think I'm deserving. I do what I do for West Hanover Township and our fire company. I mean, that's who I'm there to support. And it's just an honor that they even think that I'm worthy.
Well, thank you for being here, and certainly many have found you worthy of this award. I will now read this proclamation into the record and present you with this award. We, the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners, are pleased to recognize Kyle Miller as a 2025 Craig Webb Memorial Award recipient for Fire and Rescue Leader of the Year. Whereas Kyle began his service in 2010, when he joined the fire company as a fire police officer. He served in that capacity for several years before moving up to the position of fire police captain. Whereas today, Kyle serves the West Hanover Township Fire Company as a chauffeur and trustee. He additionally serves his community as a township supervisor, township deputy fire marshal, and township emergency management coordinator. That's a lot of titles. Look at that. You're really serving your community. Whereas Kyle has always moved where he saw a need, stepping up to the plate to serve his community in any capacity he could, and has shown his unwavering commitment, dedication, and leadership in every role. Whereas Kyle's service-forward attitude shines in his professional life as well, where he spends hours of his free time helping friends and relatives with their home improvement projects, and serves as a Boy Scout advisor for the troop that the West Hanover Township Fire Company sponsors. Therefore, we join the 293,000 residents of Dauphin County in commending Kyle on his selfless nature and innate ability to see a need and seek to serve in any capacity needed, as we do hereby proclaim December eleventh as Kyle Miller Day in Dauphin County.
I'd like to call forward Lieutenant Kyle Gouch. You know, it's always remarkable to see individuals who are committed to public service and particularly emergency response. I think the consistent themes are sort of a commitment and a strong faith, a commitment to family, and this belief that it's really not about you. It's about the honor in serving others and being able to do something that you've been blessed with as a gift, and that's the ultimate way that you show yourself, not by these awards. So, I think for most of you, it's usually uncomfortable to be here, to be honored, but it's certainly fitting to be able to be recognized by your peers after you know you've worked tirelessly in putting together one heck of a career in law enforcement and doing it at multiple levels. So, I would say, out of individuals that I've seen, I have the good fortune to see a lot of counties around the Commonwealth and around the country. I put our first responders up against any other place, any other time, as it relates to training, commitment, the level of service, and their willingness to be a part of a community fabric that really is the place that keeps us safe, secure, and is willing to run to danger, as we are all concerned in running in the other direction in many cases. So, I want to thank you all for the level of service you provide to this county, but particularly for Lieutenant Kyle Gouch. First of all, I understand you're an avid hunter. You've got two boys. From the personal side, those are things that I was able to identify, but we also want to read a proclamation in the record. You're one of our own here at CID. I know you were a former law enforcement officer at Harrisburg as well, and you have quite the career. So, we, the Dauphin County Board of Commissioners, are pleased to recognize Lieutenant Kyle Gouch as a 2025 Craig Webb Memorial Award recipient for Law Enforcement Leader of the Year. Whereas Lieutenant Gouch has served Harrisburg Bureau of Police since 2005, exemplifying the highest standards of law enforcement through unwavering dedication, compassion, and leadership. His commitment to justice and community service makes him not only a remarkable officer, but a true pillar of the profession. Whereas Lieutenant Gouch has served in multiple positions within the Bureau, is currently assigned to the Criminal Investigation Division, and serves as the Bureau's Public Information Officer. He was the driving force in obtaining the technology and training that was needed to advance the current crime-solving technology used by CID and the Bureau Forensic Department. Whereas a member of the Criminal Investigation Division, he has been involved in thousands of investigations, and has even dedicated his personal time to being on call and responding to major incidents. He not only dedicates time for victims of crime, but is known for his dedication to the family members of the victims as well. Whereas Lieutenant Gouch's impact cannot be measured by words alone, it is reflected in the lives he has touched, from advocating for victims, guiding grieving families through unimaginable loss, to mentoring fellow officers who look to him for strength and direction. He has consistently demonstrated integrity, empathy, and resilience. Therefore, it is with great pride and honor that we honor you along with the 293,000 residents of Dauphin County in commending Lieutenant Gouch on his leadership, compassion, and commitment to those he serves. And we do hereby proudly proclaim December tenth as Kyle Gouch Day in Dauphin County. Congratulations, Cindy. I see Chief Carter is here as well as many members of the Bureau, so make sure we all join in.
As a board, we just want to thank all of our emergency responders that represent Dauphin County. We're incredibly grateful for all of you, and certainly grateful for our award recipients today of the Craig Webb Memorial Awards. We'll move on with our meeting to Salary Board. Cassie Ruschinski.
Good morning.
Good morning.
There's no items that need voted on today for Salary Board or the Personnel Packet.
Are there any questions of Cassie for what we will be taking action on next week? Hearing none? Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you, Cassie.
Director of Budget and Finance, Christopher Davis.
Morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
There are no changes to the purchase order packet that was sent out yesterday. I've been answering any questions you have.
Any questions of Mr. Davis? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Davis. Chief Clerk's report, Mr. Haggerty?
Good morning, Commissioners. There are just a handful of items on the agenda today for your consideration. First, we are, on your list is appointing our Human Services Director Randy Jaeger to the Dauphin County Capital Area Behavioral Health Collaborative Board. This is a multi-county board, which includes two staff appointees from Dauphin County, and Randy would be replacing Andrea Kepler, who recently retired. We've also got four construction agreements for the Fort Hunter Park restroom renovation project, and four of the standard annual liquid fuels tax encumbrances that must be submitted to Pendoc. That concludes my report. Unless there are any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Haggerty? Hearing none, Solicitor's report, Mr. Owens?
Thank you, Commissioner. All matters requiring board action have been reviewed and approved by the Solicitor's Office.
Any questions of Mr. Owens? Hearing none, we have a training packet before us. Do I have a motion?
I think we just have to act on item two, is that correct?
What? Okay. Yeah, I've got one and two on my.
Understood. So, I see that's 2025. I would assume that was for next year. That's already passed. Okay. I'll make a motion for items one and two on the training packet today.
Second. Motion's been made by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Matters requiring board action, we have before us items one through six. Do I have a motion for items one through six?
Still moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Hartwick, seconded by Commissioner Priest. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Former business, we have none before us. Any new business? Commissioners' comments? Commissioner Hartwick?
Just a quick report. I had the opportunity to represent the state of Pennsylvania to our Board of Directors meeting in Wise County, Texas, last Thursday and Friday, and a big part of Wednesday, which was a travel day. I just want to sort of report out that you'd be surprised across the country of the shift that is continuing to go on related to the readjustment and the re-looks of how county government operates, what it focuses on and the fundamental core principles in which we need to operate in this current era. A lot of things that we have discussed and a lot of our budget challenges and the things that we have been examining how we move forward in the future, whether it be population changes at the prison, work release, there are things that have changed significantly post-pandemic. There's also been a loss of federal revenues, and there is a huge shift related to additional responsibilities and a restriction of revenue to the local level. And those issues are going to continue to be exacerbated, which really has us at the position of having to rethink, not just with Dauphin County, but across the country, how we focus our efforts in county government. So, this idea that we've always done things this way is not really the call for action as we move forward. And there was a lot of engaging dialogue, similar issues with folks in work release. We've got about a third of the attendance at work release. We're having conversations about whether or not that's something we can do with, you know, day reporting, looking at areas where population changes need to dictate how we move forward in an efficient and a responsible way in order to make sure we're meeting the demands that exist currently, not what we think exists, but what exists currently. How can we plan for future needs, and how can we be responsible for ensuring that those don't just spill out on our taxpayers? So, as we're having these discussions, I just wanted to put a little perspective in that kind of dialogue. Dauphin County is not alone, and rethinking government is going to be required as we move forward, and having a focus on sort of where we're at, where the fiscal positions are at. And I think I heard reported only two counties in the Commonwealth are not facing significant financial challenges. I mean, that is something to be said for systemic challenges for local government, and we need to be responsible, but that doesn't mean we throw up our hands. I think it means we need to be innovative and figuring out how we more efficiently and effectively run things based upon current population and lead that charge rather than respond to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartwick. Commissioner Priest?
Yes, I just want to give a special shout-out to Treasurer DeFrancesco, the work that he and his staff continue to do, pursuing late feats from the tellers here in Dauphin County. It's a topic that doesn't get enough attention, but Nick, you and your staff are doing a great job staying on top of that as we continue to go after those dollars that are owed to the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priest. Last week on Friday, I had the opportunity, the honor, to be on a panel at Imagination ELC 25, which is a technology and government conference representing the county among tech leaders, just speaking to municipal government and the intersection of tech, and learned a lot while I was there, and also got the ability to contribute a little bit from representing Dauphin County here and IT in general. So, that was a great opportunity last week to represent the county. We have correspondence before us. It'll be received by the Chief Clerk's office. We have ten items, and disseminated as needed. Our public participation, I have two individuals who have signed up for public participation, and then it will be open to the floor. Just a reminder, it is a three-minute cap for public participation. You'll need to state your name prior to beginning, and we are being livestreamed. I'll begin with Antonio Foster, and Gene Stilpe is on deck.
Antonio Foster, how y'all doing, five-nine-four, Chambers Street? Yeah, I mean, we kind of know what's going on. It's the same show, but I'm here to say some new things and speak on some things also of the past. I would love to, you know, say the things. I would love to, you know, say the things in front of the, because once I say something, I have no problem with saying it again, especially in front of who I said it about. I have no problem with doing that, but going forward, I ain't about to speak about a lot of things that I ain't going to get into. I have my personal reasons why, and we're going to fix that. But as far as the system and as far as, you know, spoke on a 302, I have proof. Evidently, the Jared Spencer was one thing to prove. I don't know who did that, but you guys, you probably should have figured that out by now, but I'm sure you didn't. But my issue is going on with my hospital records. Everything's being played with in the system along with social security disability, along with some proof that I have right here in my pocket. I can show you the difference of the files. You know, I always got proof when I talk. There's a lot more people that I ain't even bring up yet because I don't want to waste my three minutes on that, but it will get a little deeper. I just want justice. It seems like I come down here and the people who are in place, the Commissioners, when I say this, it's like, I'm not speaking bad about you, it's just accountability that comes with your job. You know what I'm saying? As a public servant, and it seems like the charm made me the villain, that we've got a personal issue that I don't know about. Because with the facts and the proof that I've came with, I don't understand how I can't get any type of help or justice. But it seems like when it comes to going against me, the power is exuded on high levels. That's just what I've come up with personally, and I think I've proven that also. Another thing that I would like to speak on, I brought up in the past about my identity theft. I've also brought up names to match those who were still in my identity theft. Breaking news, those same names that I brought up. Some of them were indicted, some of them were the children of those people, but just indicted for 2.7 million. I'm sure my little couple hundred thousand's in there somewhere. Maybe you guys can help me find it. I mean, I'm just asking for, I'm just coming with facts and proof. That's all I'm coming with, and I'm asking for help from the people that I'm supposed to ask for it from. Don't make me the villain or the bad guy. Thank you. Take care, y'all have a nice day.
Gene Stilpe, and then it's open to the floor. How are you? Thank you.
Gene Stilpe, Fisher Creek Valley. Let me speak about innovative, innovation. I'd like to speak a little bit about innovative financing, okay? Just announced the possibility of a 15% increase, which is in addition to the 21% increase that went to effect earlier this year. In the meantime, the Dolphin County Commissioners have been pushing to reopen the Three Mile Island, and no time that any of the Dolphin County Commissioners utilize their opportunities to negotiate. With Constellation for a substantial fiscal amount, that Constellation Energy would pay in order for Dolphin County to participate in emergency evacuation plan, reopen the plant. Now, the Constellation Energy wants to reopen the Three Mile Island. Constellation Energy has tasked Dolphin County itself. Many of the Dolphin County's school districts, townships, boroughs, city of Harrisburg was participating in the evacuation plan in case there is a nuclear emergency at the Constellation-owned Three Mile Island Unit One. This is an opportunity for Dolphin County Commissioners to demand an agreement with Constellation Energy, where Constellation Energy gives Dolphin County a payment of $100 million for Dolphin County to participate in Constellation's energy plant to reopen Three Mile Island. Constellation Energy gets their emergency evacuation plan from Dolphin County, and they also get an additional 350 tons of the most highly poisonous waste storage to be stored in Three Mile Island in the middle of the Siskiyou River. That's what they get. What do we get? $100 million. If Dolphin County Commissioners are so intent on reopening Three Mile Island, they should start thinking about what financial benefit they could get for committing the citizens of Dolphin County to the reopening of one of the most poisonous sites on earth. Continued, Dolphin County Commissioners are selling out to taxpayers of Dolphin County. Dolphin County Commissioners want a 15% increase, 30% increase, plus the other, you know, plus the one recent one. They should start thinking about, they should start thinking about what Dolphin County can get. You're not getting enough. Dolphin County Commissioners should grow a collective backbone and demand a huge payment from Constellation Energy. If you need help negotiation, we are available. I, from TMI Research's perspective, we are still 100% opposed to the reopening of Three Mile Island Unit One, even if the Dolphin County Commissioners strike a deal with Constellation Energy because emergency planning, emergency evacuation planning for such a hard, for such a large-scale evacuation plan does not work. There are over a quarter million citizens, 10-mile evacuation zone, another half a million in the four counties that are beyond the arbitrary line. Simple question, what do you do to evacuate Penn State Hershey Medical Center? Thank you very much, and happy New Year to you, happy Merry Christmas, and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Gene. Anyone else for public comment?
Nick D. Francesco, Dolphin County Treasurer. Won't take up much of your time, but a formal request is going to be coming from my office to you for consideration of a change to the Dolphin County Hotel Tax Ordinance. I'm going to provide each one of you a copy today of a, the ordinance from Jefferson County, where they actually impose, in the rarest of circumstances, prison time for those hotels that do not respond. And each of you know that under the hotel tax ordinance, we have been very aggressive. I appreciate your comments from my staff, Commissioner Priest. With all that we have done, there are still two or three players that, you know, we've recovered close to a million, if not over a million dollars this year, and there are two or three players that still have outstanding balances, probably closing in on $500,000. And I'll just remind the public again that unlike other taxes, this particular tax is one that the hotel collects. It is a tax they collect, it's not a revenue they collect and then pay tax on. It is a tax that they collect for the Commonwealth and for the county under the ordinance. It is their obligation to remit it the next month. To hold it or mix it with other revenue is a violation of multiple laws. So we're dealing with players here that for some reason think they have control over this money and can use it for other reasons, I'm guessing, because why turn it in? You know, at this point, we assess a 9% penalty plus $100, I'm sorry, a 9% interest rate. In addition to $100 penalty, they're killing themselves from a financial standpoint. So why not just turn it over? So we obviously need something with a little more teeth, but as I said, I'm giving this to you now. I know your, I know your agenda is very full right now with what you're dealing with. We can address this in 2026, but I at least want to get it started. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Still moved.
Moved by Commissioner Priest, seconded by Commissioner Hartwick. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.